Open the Board of Selectmen meeting for May 13th, 2024. Yeah, it's 6:03. Stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America, that we are elected for which stands one nation by your government in the business of justice.
All right, first up is approving minutes. Nope, excuse me, the warrants for WR24-23.
I approve warrants WR24-23.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any minutes?
No.
No minutes? No minutes? We're going to public session. Anybody?
From Roschinsky on North Brookfield Road and Chair of the COA. Just some informational items that the COA has worked on and will approve a set of bylaws for the COA going forward. And that we unanimously approved a leave, a personal leave for our activities coordinator.
Long.
Until Labor Day. Starting, starting May 31st until Labor Day, and she has the bulk of all the planning already done.
Okay. Anything else? No. All right, next up Ted Croto.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Because I have a long-term relationship with the Boy Scouts and volunteer at this event, I'm gonna leave the room for this conversation.
Okay.
Nothing against you Ted.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Hi, my name is Ted Croto. I'm with your organization called Sand Stew Incorporated. We put on, well, we already know this, we're on, we're on a festival at Treasure Valley Boy Scout Camp once a year on Labor Day weekend called Sober in the Sun. And so we're coming to ask for a permit, or a music permit for the weekend, for the Sunday, September 1st. I know in the past, one of the, amongst other things, but one of the things you've asked for is for an ambulance service, two ambulances for the entire weekend. And I come with a call from K's ambulance service, just like we have the last couple of years. I can leave with you guys if you'd like. I've already spoken with the fire department. We get Tim, right?
Yep.
Yeah, I spoke with Tim. He said as long as we're good with Matt at the, at the Treasure Valley. He's good. He said he's good with that. I spoke with the police department. I thought they were gonna be here tonight. I don't know if he's got any other questions for us.
We were just tied up in a thing. He's might be there for a bit still.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I can leave the copy of the K's ambulance with anybody who needs it. Is there any other questions?
The chain.
Yeah, through the board, Ted.
Yes.
Again, that long as that's the same, I'm cool with that. My only other concern, which I didn't bring up to you on the phone, I forgot all about till just the other day. The trailers on Boonsville Plain, we just need a little more space between them.
How much more space?
I gotta look at code for that. You remember last, last year it was like barely open doors between them.
Yep.
And that was the only thing. Not a big deal. You might be, have to have one or two less trailers, just that, you know, then space a little more.
You tell me what you need and we will.
Yeah, that's not a, that's not a big deal. That was just something last year, and I didn't think it was the last of the other day. But I will say, since this ambulance thing has gone into effect, what's that 30 you doing with the ambulance?
Yep.
Our end has been, it's been great. So that works great for me.
As long as you give us a couple of weeks prior before the event, so we know, so we, because we like to market out ourselves.
Yep.
So people know what it's like.
Yep, we just gotta make sure for, you know, I don't know code, I wanna say it's maybe seven feet between them or something. It's not a huge, it's not hundreds of feet.
Trailers get bigger every year. Bump outs get bigger, you know, you know how it is.
But yeah, I'll work with you on that.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll, we'll do whatever you need. Any other questions?
Anybody? Nope.
Nope.
All right.
We need to sign this permits.
Do you have the?
No, because he has to, he just got the applications.
Oh, you just picked up the application?
I don't have the application with me. I believe.
Right, the town clerk.
She's trying to figure out what the cost is and what everything is.
Okay, all right.
I'm going to go see her right after I'm done with, after you guys are done with me.
If you can't figure it out by, you know, this evening, I'll be more than happy to work with Anna and to see what they did last year. I know Chris did the Sunday entertainment.
And the raffle.
And the raffle.
The raffle has to go through town clerk.
You tell me what you need for checks and I will get them to you and.
Yeah, touch, I would say touch base, yeah, with, with her and then.
Right, the, make a motion to approve the raffle and the, the other permit, music permit. For 9/124, Treasure Valley.
I'll make a motion to approve this sober in the sun on 9/124.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, we've approved it.
You guys want a copy of this?
Need more than one?
No.
Thank you Ted.
Thank you. You want a copy of this?
No, I can.
All right. Fire station. Lights. What's up? Either one.
Yeah, we're in Berry Road. So that is my birthday, and I was just wondering if, hoping that maybe this year for my birthday, we could get the fire station toned down a little bit, so I could sleep at night. That'd be grand.
Sleep?
Yeah. It's getting more and more difficult as I get older. That doesn't help, not even a little. It's okay Berry Road, I'm over the hill, we're over the hill, and we can see. And it's, it's horrible. It's just way out of line. We don't need that kind of constant light. I gather from what Chief Howard said, we need to have some kind of light by state law, but we don't need the landing field for UFOs. We really, we really don't.
All right, Tim out on the branch of road and fire chief. So I did some research for this, and as we talked about, we do need to have lighting at the doors. And I'm very careful to say, I, I was long before me that building was built. The way it's built is everything's on essentially two circuits, front and back. So I can't shut off individual lights, anything like that. It's, it's not even switches, they're breakers for photocells. So there's no switches we can shut off and on. As you know, we do have to have lights at all the entrances and exits municipal building, that's code. So what I did is I got some quotes for, to have this fixed essentially. A lot of people keep saying, which is true, you can dim the current lights, but the only way to dim them is you have to clamp on a ladder, pop the lens off, is a setting, is the LED like modules, dial it down, which does us no good. Then when we really need the lights, you'd have to climb back up and turn them off. It's not something you can done quickly with a dimmer. They can't be dimmed like a house light. So I had two electricians give me a price for putting a smaller kind of wall pack next to each door. So there's seven doors in the building, each one will get a small wall pack with a photocell, it'd come on at dusk, go off at daylight. It just illuminates the door and the entranceway. And then we can shut the big lights off. And like I explained, I said the only time we'd have to turn them on is, you know, maybe training until nine o'clock at night. I can just flip the breaker, we can turn them on, shut them off when leave, or if Kevin's or Harold is loading sand his own back, they can turn the back ones on during the snowstorm and shut them off after. To do that, I got two different prices. And I tried to do apples to apples compared with electricians because it's different stuff, but. So I had a gentleman on Old Turnpike who quoted me $1,300 for seven wall packs and the labor. And then I also had Tom McCaffrey, and he was $1,200 for seven wall packs to that. Now, also, the only other thing I got a quote on which makes things easier is to add a switch to the big lights rather than having people go into the circuit panel and turn the breakers off and on. So to be two switches, and that's another $600. I only got that from Tom. And I, I just called the other gentleman because I wanted to be fair and get, but he's, it was, I literally was just talking when I walked in. He's gonna give me a price on that. So I guess, long story short, we're looking at about $2,000 or under to do this. I don't have money in our budget, Kevin and I's, that's our whole B is building maintenance budget.
Yeah.
So if the town can fund it, I'm game for this. We don't need those bright lights all the time. We just have to have, I can't shut them off until we have a solution.
Yeah.
So I'm looking to the board to, if we can fund this somehow, then I'll get it done within a couple of weeks. Happy birthday, sorry, but.
That's all right.
Delay your birthday.
Yeah, delay birthday.
The promise is good.
I fully support it. With both options, I think it's crazy to be going into a circuit break.
Yeah, I mean, if we want to spend 13, like down, you know, I think the next $600, might as well do it right now, switch, but. Yeah, a two switch, a front and a back switch. Then my only other question, if it's approved, is through the board, I know there's some issues with using town employees for town work. I don't know how that plays, can I use Tom?
Special, special town employee.
If he is, yeah, if that position is.
Yeah. I believe he's a special town employee.
So I'd like permission, I guess, to use lowest bid. Yeah, I'll keep them fair and, as much as, you know, I'm loyal to all my firefighters, I'm close to the town first and have to do low bid.
Yeah.
And I'll keep it secret and quiet and just do the right thing with lowest one. Be fair to everybody.
Does the board want to fund this?
Harper.
Harper. Harper.
I'll have it done in about two weeks. I will have it done.
Thank you. Oh God, this is so wonderful. Thank you, thank you. You're gonna live near it to know how bad it is.
I can't imagine.
You just have to drive by.
Yeah.
Neither one, they, they turned them on for the night I had gone out for dinner. I got by Jeff Nakla's house and I asked who built the airport while we were out to visit dinner. I was just like, what is that? Yeah, I know, it was, oh, I know. I asked if they were gonna do the second, you know, what was that?
Close Encounters.
Close Encounters. We've been saying for years, we wish they could, but everyone would laugh at us. They don't have to live near it.
So Tom, that was $1,800?
$1,800 is worst case.
That was for the two.
That's for two pole gong outfits.
So I would move that we fund with ARPA up to $1,800 for the addressing the light issue at the fire station.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Not that it matters, but part of the reason we can do this so cheap right now is National Grids offering incentive for commercial buildings, $15 fixtures. And only a hundred something bucks.
Oh, wow, excellent. Oh, good.
Timing wise, I haven't just hit.
Timing.
Everything. All right.
I never had that kind of luck. So beautiful.
Anything else on the lights, Tim?
Uh, no, nothing else on the lights.
I'm good.
Next up is the town meeting warrants. They're pretty. Get my copy. The other day.
Yes. Put some, like that in it.
Oh, okay. You guys had the opportunity to read this over? Any questions in the articles or any of the funding?
I think there were some questions on the format of the budget itself. It is the first time that we've had the percentage of change. I just thought that was different.
Oh, yeah.
Actually, did it have changed from previous year? I don't think so. Did it?
Yeah.
But the.
I think last year it did.
Okay.
Yeah.
On the warrant from last year, we had the first two columns. It didn't have the percentages.
Right.
That's what it went based on. You guys did do it, but it was printed on the warrant.
We haven't had $3,500 in the historical commission account for about four years. Most we've had in the last, last year was 2,500.
Okay.
Actually, that was FY23. So this should be 2,500, and we kept our, this should be 1,500 to 1,500. Therefore, we kept ours even. And I asked to keep that 1,500, even though it was requested of us to give it up. I didn't because the arch is coming in, and if we need it, at least we have something to fall back on.
Right.
So you, you need to check out those two accounts there.
Got that.
Yeah, and actually, in the Excel document that we've been working on, it did show it as 1,500 in the previous. So I think that was just a typo.
Typo, yeah. Okay. I, I know you've explained this 100 times. Can you just explain it again? On your expenses for the Board of Health. Those are $2,000 drop.
Correct.
What did we do there?
Um, in light of the fact that the town was in financial troubles, we reduced the expense line.
Okay. And that does not affect less.
I don't think so, because at the special town meeting, we, we sort of offset it by increasing the administrative assistant up to five hours, which was a $2,000 increase. So the net difference is a $500 difference.
Okay.
So I can't imagine them having a cow over $500.
Okay.
Whereas some towns completely eliminated their entire Board of Health budget when they went to the coalition. We simply are reducing it five.
That's what I was thinking of you. Yeah, they'd have a problem if we eliminated the funding. Okay. All right.
Maribel Paxton, that looked okay.
That actually went down to what, the 5,000? Yeah, that's what you guys had.
At the last.
Okay.
You still have a special article?
Yep, yes.
They still have that article. So the total increase for the town budget, just the town side, is 3.08%. $53,357.98, that's the increase. Then we have the Quabin School and the Pathfinder School. That's gone up 6%. The total there is $167,256.70. Should note that the school did reduce the budget from 144,000, increased by 59,000. I think it had to do with rural aid. So they did, they did make some moves there.
I think it's important to mention in Alan's draft letter, as you mentioned, about 3%, but inflation, as measured by the Consumer Price Index, increased 16.9% the last three years. So this is a bare bones budget.
Total FY25 budget is $4,842,256.30. Total budget is up 6.3% including the school. Any other issues on the money?
Nope. Are we, we need to vote to back out the 50,000 in ARPA?
Gonna make a motion.
I would move that we rescind on the allocation of $50,000 for the, from ARPA to fund the FY25 budget.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That'll bring us back to about 125,000 for Harper.
Um, 115.
Okay. 115.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that include the 20,000 we'd put to one side or tried to for the town hall?
No, because there was never any official motion, or that was like just a pending project estimate, but that does not reflect it.
Nope, because I have one estimate so far, which is far exceeding what we were thinking it would be to take the town hall by one gentleman. It was 32,000. And I'm, I'm looking for two more.
Three sites.
Three sites.
Three sites.
I'm coming up with three more estimates, or two more estimates. Hopefully it'll be in soon.
And there's probably gonna have to be some woodwork repair, since there's rock.
That's stated on his estimate. He has an estimate of about 20 things he wants to do with the building. But I have to wait and see what the other people are gonna come up with.
It's been from a pooh goodness.
We are needing procurement. Historical, yeah.
Yeah. So we're all set with articles one through eight?
Eight with the change.
Change.
Yep. From the.
The 1,500 from 35.
Historical.
Historical.
Yeah, Article 9 is the transfer into the assessment stabilization account for the three-year valuation. Believe that was 6,000. And 10 was to create the center school capital, capital stabilization account. And Article 11 goes with that. It's the funded with 15,000. To get it moving. Any issues?
Yep.
Article 12 is the Wachusia Greenway grant donation. It's a thousand dollars. People will decide on that. And Police Department Vehicle Stabilization Account. That was 11,000.
That was Article 13?
Article 13. Article 14 is for the fire department to create a revolving fund. Pay for training from the fees received by the fire department. Article 15.
Can we go back to 13 for a second?
Yep.
The thieves town will vote and raise appropriate funds transfer for the Police Department Stabilization Account, 11,000, which is what we've been doing for the past several years. In the future, to purchase vehicles, it's going to be taking probably an extra year of savings in order to be able to afford one, because the costs are going up so quickly on the vehicles, that we might want to reconsider the 11,000 and base it to something that might be, will be able to meet their demands, because we try to replace the vehicles every four years. The four years from now, 11,000, this year may not be enough.
Yeah, won't be.
Or next year, or the year after. The going prices right now for the vehicles are approximately 55.
Yeah.
Maybe 48, 45. So we might want to think about that one.
Okay. The chief is gonna get us an exact price and a recommendation going forward. Article 15 is to hear the report of the Town Planning Committee on this building. Article 16 is that we've upped, kept the 32B Section 9A, which would allow the town to pay 50% of the premium costs for retired employees' group health, group life, health, life insurance. Untwistful. Article 17 goes with that. That's to accept General Arch up to 32B Section 2. To establish an other post-employment benefit liability trust fund. Going forward, that's how we would pay for retirees' health insurance, for the 50%. Article 18 is from the Board of Assessors. Well, this is to grant real impersonal property tax abatement exemptions up to 100% to members of the Massachusetts National Garden Reserve on active duty in foreign countries for the fiscal years that they perform such service. Subject to eligibility criteria established by the Board of Assessors. 19, also from the assessors, is to increase the property tax exemption amount for veterans in accordance with General Arch up to 59, Section 5, from $400 to $800, maximum allowed. Anne, did you want to say anything about that?
I think I watched the, was it the last meeting, the previous meeting? Aaron had a question on how many. Presently, we have 15 veterans. Isn't that why I added that amount to overlay? Because that's where the money comes from.
Okay. All right. Article 20 is to vote to expend the sum of money from the Cruiser Stabilization Account for a new cruiser replacement. Explanation is to replace the oldest cruiser in the police vehicle fleet. 21 is to amend section, excuse me, Chapter 8, Section 1 of the general bylaws. It adds, "Members of the Finance Committee may serve on uncompensated ad hoc or advisory multiple member bodies, but shall be prohibited from serving on. multiple member bodies, but shall be prohibited from serving on multiple, multiple member bodies for which compensation is provided by the town. Any discussion on those? Article 22 is to amend chapter six, the personnel bylaw.
They did the same thing.
In accordance with Mass General, Chapter 41, 108C, the purpose of this chapter is to establish a fair and equitable personnel policy and system of personnel administration based on merit principles that will ensure uniform, efficient application of those policies. It would cover all employees of the town, including employees of the public library, all employees that appointed or elected boards shall be subject to the provisions of this chapter and personnel policies adopted pursuant thereto. The extent that these terms of any collective bargaining agreement conflict with provisions of this chapter or personnel policy adopted thereto, the provisions of the collective bargaining agreement shall prevail. That's state law. Adoption of the policies, the vote of selection shall promulgate personnel policies that define the rights, benefits and obligations of the employees subject to this chapter and personnel system. Personal policies adopted pursuant to this chapter shall establish a personnel system which shall include, but not limited to, following elements. The administration or system which assigns responsibility for personnel systems, including maintenance of personnel records, implementation of effective recruitment and selection processes, maintenance of classification and compensation plans, oversight of application of policies and periodic review and evaluation of personnel systems, recruitment and selection policies, central record keeping systems, rights and obligations of employees and other elements of a personnel system as deemed appropriate at the vote of selection. That basically formalizes our HR policy that we had the study done on and they put a nice packet together. That was the last article.
The only question I have on that. Under application, including employees of the public library and all employees of appointed or elected boards. What's the definition of employees?
If you're appointed by the town or elected by the town, you're an employee, according to town council.
Yeah. Because it says all employees of appointed or elected boards.
Yeah, it's synonymous.
Okay, so it includes the elected board members?
Yes.
And their employees?
Yes. This is written by town council, so. Only two articles. Changes. You have a motion to adopt this.
Have a question on that. Farho Shep from Gaffney wrote, I'm just curious about where the finance committee fits into that because they're a totally autonomous unit, unpaid. I think they would be exempted from that, I believe. Just asking.
This was written specifically for the finance committee because of the two members that were on the cable commission? And they couldn't do both?
No, I understand that, but I was, I was talking about this human resources section that you just read.
Yep.
Okay, I, I don't believe most of that pertains to the finance committee. That's why I'm just asking because in the bylaws, they are a totally autonomous unit and, and they are appointed by the moderator.
Let me ask you this. If the finance committee made an egregious mistake on something or whatever and we got sued, who's paying that lawsuit? Town of Oakham is.
I, I realize that, but I'm just saying a lot of those regulations really should not pertain to the finance committee. You, you had about four chapters that you just read.
Yep. Why, why wouldn't it pertain to them? They're part of the town.
Again, because they are a totally autonomous committee. They're the only autonomous group in, in all the town government. I'm, I'm just, I'm just tossing that out. Okay?
I'll, I'll check with council on that.
I, I'd appreciate that because that is a concern.
I'll, I'll, I'll check with them.
Thank you.
I would move we, um, uh, sign the annual town meeting warrant for June 3rd, 2024 at seven o'clock. And accept the articles as presented with one correction to Article eight, correcting the 24th column to say that was 1,500 dollars.
Yep.
So moved.
Okay, move in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's not, can't find that's one wrong. It's just the last page.
That's true.
Yeah. Make reflection before I move.
The spacing was all weird.
Yeah, that's when, from when adding the, but I've, that's, you guys are just saying the last one's the last except. Should probably get a couple more copies of that.
Yeah.
Just that last thing.
Amy?
Do I take this and sign it?
Yep, today.
No. I know that.
Okay.
But usually the dates afterwards, it's just weird. You know what I mean?
That's what you were talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah. But that came from Alan, didn't it?
Hmm.
Today's the 13th?
13th. She's going to make some more copies and.
Okay, so then.
She'll be right back.
All right, so then I'll have another one that hang. Okay. Okay. It should be, um, at least two more pages signed with the original signature first. Because we need to have one, town clerk needs to have an original, not a photocopy.
But it all gets uploaded. So technically, don't you only need the one now?
I think that's what Edna said last time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because she then uploads the.
Right.
The signed version.
Right. I remember her saying that on the last one. Either way, Maribor is printing up some more, so we need to, fine, we got them.
Okay. It's even so, you do a lot of that. Government wants something, they want an original signature on a piece of paper.
Yeah.
I go through that with concentration.
Four more there?
Oh, but she has, she has to post it.
Online.
Someone has to put it online.
Yes. That have to be posted today or tomorrow? We're still within the timeframe.
Yeah, we are.
Yeah.
Yeah, just seven days before.
Actually. Get up the FinCom meeting.
Meet up with her.
I'll do the Paul Verne method and that'll be better.
At least she can read it.
Amy, when I fix it, we'll meet up. She can post it outside. The sign.
Yes, please.
Next up is Zoom video uploads, time expectations. Do we have a time expectation?
We don't.
No.
I mean, technically, it's, it's not the public record version of it. But I think it's, you know, if we get requests for it, I think it maybe we should say, or we strive for seven days, you strive for 10 days, but if it's not there within three hours, chill.
You set the bar high.
So, I mean, the policy doesn't say anything.
Doesn't say anything.
Um, but I thought it was important that we all be on the same page that, uh, because it takes, depending on how long the meetings are, it's either an hour, two hours after the meeting before it shows up. And then it takes about a half an hour for it to upload. And some of these meetings are, are late.
Yeah.
Late day.
Okay. So there is no policy.
You're welcome.
I mean, if there's a public records request, we could provide it within the public record time, but I think it's nice to say within seven days, but, you know, if someone's on vacation or.
Yes. And should we have a second person?
Absolutely.
Can do this?
Absolutely. Yep.
No, I'll be more than happy to, if you want to show me, you know, because I know you've done it most of the, all the time, which is very much appreciated.
You got the backup.
The board.
It's good with that. It's fine with me.
Although you all have access to it.
Sure. All right. So within seven days.
I think so. That's our, our, we strive for seven days. However, it is live at the time of the meeting.
Right.
For some of our points.
Right. Right. Make a motion for seven days and backup being Maribor.
Sure. Um, I would move that, um, the, um, we amend our, what policy is that?
Social, the vote, no.
Remote meeting participation policy to add that, um, meetings will be posted within seven days and that the clerk of the board will be the primary poster and that the administrative assistant will be the alternate.
Move in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, next is the agenda protocol policy. Do you all read that?
Yep.
Any issues, questions, concerns?
The only thing that I had, um, so there's the public comment portion, public session. And then it looks like, um, public session could theoretically continue throughout the course of the meeting, which is certainly way beyond what's required.
Right.
As is public session is beyond what's required. How do, how does the chair determine, um, what's an appropriate agenda item or not? For a discussion from the public?
Well, usually if the public wants something specific, they will request be put on the agenda.
For, for the agenda, but let's say, you know, Mr. O'Shea asked a very fair question about the articles. Does every agenda item have public comment? It sounds like.
No.
It's based upon the chair recognizing them.
Not every, no.
Okay.
That's the discretion of the chair.
Okay.
That's state law.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
And the three minute maximum, that's for public comment and for public participation? I, I think that would be, I would add, uh, there shall be a three minute maximum limit for speakers to the public comment.
First one.
Yeah.
Yes.
And with the new, is it a Supreme Court? That basically you can say anything as long as it's not fire. Are we able to limit any of the stuff above?
It, it cannot create disorder in the meeting.
Yeah.
That's the only thing we can stop.
Yep. So it says is not to be used. Is that also like should not be used, but technically they can, can't they? You should not be used to present charges or complaints against any specifically named individual, public or private.
Most towns have that wording that say.
Yeah.
Don't make the complaint.
I'm just wondering with that new rule, and I didn't get a chance to watch that, um, session.
Self-pro case.
Yeah. It sounded like you could say anything you wanted.
That was a case where a member of the audience took issue with something one of the board members said and let it be known that he didn't appreciate it. That's fine.
Yep.
The board members tried to eliminate that conversation, which they can't do. But if it gets to be disorderly and disrupt the meeting, then you can.
Yep.
And that's all the Supreme Court said. You got to let them talk. You know, particularly if they're making a complaint. The thing you got to realize is if you're making a complaint about a public employee, that goes into a whole different set of circumstances. We have to follow the law on that one. But generally, no.
Okay. So for items on the agenda, it does say matters, um, we'll consult. So if there's action to be taken, we'll consult with the chair in advance. Is that with the chair through the administrative assistant?
We've had a policy for four years.
Four years.
It says everything coming to us and includes department heads and employees must go through her before it gets to us.
Yeah.
That way, all three of us know what's going on.
Right, right.
And nobody's out of the loop.
Yep.
So.
And we have this table here. Should there be something in there that during public comment, we're asking those speaking to come to the table or, or is that only for like if someone's doing a presentation?
Yeah, they're doing a presentation. I don't think they need to come up here to talk to us.
Okay.
You know.
But they can stand and speak from their chair.
Yeah, they can stand and speak from the chair. I mean.
Yeah, it's.
Or if we have a podium, they could come to a podium.
I was afraid it was muted.
There's one upstairs.
There's a one upstairs.
Yeah, there's one upstairs.
Oh, it's like.
For a reason.
Well, at the annual town meeting, we have them come to the podium now, so we could do it here also.
Yeah, but if they've got plans and stuff.
It's half the size of this table.
Any other issues on this?
Yeah. I would move that we adopt the agenda protocol as presented.
With the addition of adding
Three minutes.
Three minutes into public comment.
Yep.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll post this on the website. Next is the Meyer Public Safety Protection renewal. This one.
It's for the liability for local officials and police and fire.
Police and fire. This is everything that's covered and the amounts that are covered. Same thing every year.
It is.
I move we sign the twenty five FY twenty five Public Safety Protection plus renewal.
Oh, great one.
Aye.
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 I don't know where your piles at. ZBA appointment. What is this for? What is this for? ZBA appointment?
It's on back.
Okay.
But we haven't heard back as to whether or not he wants it. He went through Carl.
I would move that we hold this until the next meeting.
Carl didn't get back to him. I told Carl to make sure that, you know, he was comfortable with it with Zoom. And he didn't get back him or me.
And he's still on the planning board.
Yep.
He is still on the planning board.
Is that a conflict?
I I had that conversation on Sunday with Carl. He didn't think so. But I definitely think it's worth having more clarity on the Zoom, the policy. Yeah, potential conflict.
Both boards can issue special permits.
No. Zoning Board cannot.
They but they are approving permits, variances.
They're approving variances, not permits. In Okim, for some reason, only Planning Board is allowed to do permits. Zoning Board was taken out of the mix.
Does but does the Mass General law allow them? Is this one of these bylaws that's outdated?
They can. In some towns, they do do permits. I know in Spencer they do. But in Okim, they don't. They weren't given that privilege. So we just deal with variances.
Yeah. Yeah, so I think with the lack of anything to review or.
Yeah, I would also like counsel look at section seven of the town by law. Appeal of the decision of the Planning Board must be filed within thirty days of the Planning Board decision. The Board of Appeals will hold. So you've already sitting on one committee and made a decision and now you're gonna rule on the appeal? I don't think so.
Yeah.
Just see what council says about it.
In the towns where I have seen the same person on both boards, they were elected positions. If your name is on a ballot and you are elected, you are allowed to run in any of those. The people have chosen you to run there. We're not on the ballot for the ZBA. Only for the Planning Board.
Yeah.
So that could help to eliminate us from being able to do that.
Right. Okay. We'll hold on the next meeting. In the meantime, you have an answer.
We do, yeah. You do need an answer from Town Council on that one.
Okay.
And if I may, I did email town council today following up on correspondence from the planning board and then just added this new piece.
Oh, okay, good. Upper Fund Update Requests. Extraryal Study.
If I may really quickly with the working with the accountant, everything is up to date as of Friday. The total amount available between expenses and allocations is sixty five thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars and seven cents, but this is prior to the removal or going back on the fifty thousand for ARPA. So that brings it to one fifteen four fourteen oh seven. If the board looks on page three under allocations, there are some items that are highlighted in yellow that have remain in balances. For example, Board of Health had an allocation of ten thousand dollars, seven thousand nine ninety nine fifty was used, so they have almost three thousand left. Board of Health's amount wasn't allocated for a specific project. It was just Board of Health in general. The executive chairs has a remaining balance of sixty dollars and six cents. I think that project
Closed.
Be complete, so we can give that back. I write.
She wanted to pay me for my time.
The MMA.
Good luck.
Has a remaining balance of fourteen hundred and fifty dollars and ninety six cents, which actually a reimbursement of thirty five dollars just came out of that. So does the board want to just keep that after this, just in case something else comes up?
If there are any other MMA conferences.
Yeah, just keep us a joint there anyway.
Okay. The restroom splash divider has a remaining balance of a hundred and fifteen dollars and forty five cents. Keep or return?
I Paul, anything else we want to add to that splash divider?
I think we've completed that.
A step stool? I think the urinal is kind of high, I've heard. I think it should be returned.
Okay.
Okay, the other one that has the remaining balance of five dollars are the five dollars and thirty five cents are the audience chairs. You've got another chair for that amount?
No, they were thirty five dollars.
So return.
Return that.
And the safety complex electrical lift has a remaining balance of one thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. I did touch base with highway superintendent and he says he's it's all set. The electrical lift was four thousand, six hundred and fifty. So that can be he said up to him, it could be returned. So the board can determine that.
Yep.
They got to use the list today.
Of course.
Yeah. They come in handy.
Put the button up with it and we're gonna actually have all the lights working for telling me the inside.
Nice.
I'll take the outside lights and I'll put them inside. We can do all the bells inside.
And and since Tom's a covered under our insurance, could he use that to fix the, does he have to do anything up?
No, it's all high level.
So on top of the fifty thousand that's going back, returned is going to be two thousand, nine hundred and eighty one dollars and eighty two cents from completed project.
And of the twenty nine hundred fifty for Board of Health, the only thing that's really outstanding on that, which we had verbalized, the project being the trailer.
Letter night.
And lettering it. So at some point getting a lettering.
I have the guy to the fire truck says all seals. I can give you his name.
Okay. Yeah, Kevin was gonna do that. So that would be great.
We could paint it.
You could paint it?
No, we.
Oh. I thought like the COA could paint it or something.
For Thursday.
That would be a good project.
Saturday from July to September. Those three months for additional part time.
But coverage.
Coverage, yeah.
So I will let the accountant know of the fifty thousand and which projects can be marked off completed. We'll add it back to the available balance and then post and update it on the website.
Did we have to move in second all that?
Yeah.
I would move in second. I would move that we adopt all those adjustments.
More favor?
Aye.
Second part of that was the extraryal study is twenty two hundred.
Twenty two hundred.
I would move that we allocate twenty two hundred for the extraryal study related to article.
Seventeen.
Article sixteen.
OPED? It is sixteen?
Actually, it could be the one.
Article sixteen and seventeen?
Yeah.
Maybe.
Oh, okay.
All favor?
I don't think there was a second.
Oh, you didn't second?
Second.
She's being funny.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Get on here FY twenty five budget.
To do it all over again.
We just. Admin Assistant Report.
I just want to notify the board that as of Friday, I received an email from the Attorney Inspector's Office and the General Inspector, and they approved my application for a procurement officer to designate, so. Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that. Okay, great.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We're all set to go. Congratulations.
An associate.
Well, you gotta work your way to the full thing. I know.
Did you get did you get a may on the test?
You don't have to say that.
I did actually pretty good considering. But yes, they don't give you grades. You just have to answer so many questions and then it shuts down. But yeah.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Very good.
So that's
a lot of work.
They give you three years to take the classes, but I was an overachiever, maybe, and I booked them all back to back to back and but it's over.
Good. Excellent. Now all that procurement will go through you.
We'll see. We've already started.
Is there any new business for the board?
Just so you know, for the building here, I've been reached out to like three different vendors about fire extinguishers to replace the ones in the building here. So we are on that, but the vendor we always use on the business. So I gotta now start from square one of paperwork, all that kind of stuff. That process is going. The only other thing, and again, I don't know the history of this, but the American flags, I was just thinking for Memorial Day that we go down the street, probably three quarters need to be replaced. I don't know who that falls on though. I don't know whoever bought, you know, the ones that go in the side poles.
I I bought this one.
No, ones on the
Telephone pole.
Oh, we have it.
The telephone.
Yeah, we put them up every year. We just always well, since I'm a chief, we just bet hey, we have a truck and allows we can put them up. I don't know who buys them. And I I
I don't know.
And from some of the history I've heard, it's been kind of different organizations. One year buys them and
Yeah.
You get probably, I mean, we're good at what we take them down for a weekend. We don't leave them for a long time, but they're pretty rad and kind of.
I would use ARPA.
Yeah.
That's a good use of that.
I think there I was looking on Amazon, three by fives made fifteen dollars.
Yeah, because we already have the poles. You're just looking.
Yeah, just replacing the flag. The poles are fine. I don't know how many there are. They come down Maple and they go a couple poles either way at the.
And and while you're at it, could you do some bunting in front of the town hall on the town hall building? Or is that you're afraid the walls don't fall off?
Yeah.
And someone was very nice. I'm not sure what family did it, but they did the bunting at the
Yeah, that looked.
The gazebo and it was their own.
Yeah, that was nice.
One's like, oh, some, you know, a couple was out there doing it and left it on for a while, which was very nice, but I think that it would be beneficial to have the town have their own.
Approximately, how many are there?
Yes. Twenty? Well, that would be high, I guess. I don't maybe ten down Maple Ave.
Streets.
So street, little street. And then they go what? There's three or four down this way and three or four down. Yeah, maybe twenty might be the number.
I I I would say twenty. Minimum.
So I I would move that we allocate four hundred dollars for the patriotism flag efforts to include replacement on the poles and potential bunting for the town hall.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If you want, I'll take care of that. I'll get the count. It's an Amazon account. It's so easy to use.
You're welcome.
It's been increased.
It's four hundred and one dollars.
Because I broke it.
Not just you. It was a lot.
We have enough time for oral.
Is the town flag pole ready for the Boy Scouts to work?
It's not painted.
How about the roping? So it doesn't.
I replaced it.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yeah, that was.
I remember the year.
And I have some flags.
Yeah, the one that's I think that's a that was a four by six or a
That's a smaller one, yeah.
No, that's a I bought, I ended up going like three different times and going, it's not big enough. It's not big enough.
Okay.
That might be the same size as the big one, maybe not.
No, I think I have a much bigger one.
That flag pole could withstand category five. I'm not sure my knot could. But.
Golden branch, she wrote, I wanted to ask about the retirement article sixteen. This is intended to apply to our town of Okim, direct employees, police, fire, highway, etc. Well, you're not paid yet, but maybe you can be a full time. But we also have other full time employees. They're called the school employees. Would they be barred from being part of this if it were better than their own policy?
They're not town employees.
Okay, they're not considered.
They're the district.
Okay.
Boys, that's why.
I just wanted that clarified.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just just not full time employees.
I think I we talked about me applying for senior housing feasibility under the one stop grant. It was like a a letter of interest. And they gave us initial feedback and they said, yes, this would likely be funded. And I also reached out to CMR PC and they would be willing to at no charge to us do the grant application for the feasibility study. But they also emailed today saying that they have an alternative grant idea. grant idea that they would like to discuss. So CMR PC does a lot of local municipal grants. They're out looking for them and then they notify the towns that they're working with regularly. So I think this is a good relationship to continue to foster. So I just wanted to update the board on that.
Okay. Should we have them come into a meeting?
I think it would be good to kind of formalize that possible future relationship.
Yeah.
Because so many of theirs are free. So why would we ever turn down a, a free grant writing? I'm scheduled to meet with them Friday at twelve-thirty, just to talk about what that grant is. But then we'll request, I'll let them know that we would want them to come in.
Okay. Any other old business?
No.
Any correspondence?
I do. I thought it was very nice when I saw this envelope from the Labar family. And we opened it and I know Aaron had mentioned this at a prior meeting of their son, Jacob Thomas Labar. They formally sent an invitation to the board.
Eagle Scout Corps, Corps of Honor, May eighteenth, four P M, Barry Sportsman's Club.
He did his Eagle project, was helping the fire department.
It's very nice.
Signs up and he made a map. Like a distributor on online for dry items and stuff. Did a great job.
Okay.
Are you going?
I have one of our members' graduation that night from fire academy.
Do I plan on going and we'll present our proclamation?
Proclamation, yep. Okay, very good.
That's just want to share it because it is very nice card.
And I'll thank him on behalf of the fire department.
Yes, thank you. Oh, correspondence too. I want to invite the board formally. We're doing active shooter training that I set up through a grant. Saturday, the it's a three-day class, but the last Saturday, I think if you guys want to come by at some point mid-morning and see if it follows the new state mandates that we are required to follow. The only thing I'm having a struggle with is I have to have enough cops and I'm gonna kill my grant. I have enough firefighters, but the police, they're not gonna hold it. So I'm working with friends, Sergeant Matt Erosion to get the seats full, so we don't lose the class. But it's on Saturday, the first, it's two nights during the week and on Saturday, it's a sixteen-hour class, two foreign nights, eight hours on Saturday.
June.
June, yeah. But it'll be at the Okam Center School and it's actual practical exercises all day doing active shooter training.
Are you able to invite other departments?
Yes.
Um, I did get an email from Dr. Marshall, who's the chair of the Barry, Barry Board Selectman, and she responded to something separate for the Board of Select, the Select Board Association. And did say that they were hoping to work with area towns on opportunities to work together and I don't know if, if it would, if you end up coming short with our own department, if you wanted to make that offer.
I have reached out to all the police departments all around. It's one of, and the, the good thing about this class is the new statewide protocol. So if we go to Rutland or if they come here or we go to Barry, we're all on the same page doing the exact same thing. It's all the lessons unfortunately learned through the years past. It's a whole new change from what law enforcement used to do. We're going fires, going right in, right away now. And we're just trying to get some dragon people out and it's changing the law enforcement mentality of we're no longer waiting outside because they're finding it's, it's not working. Yep. So it's a great class. I've taken it twice in the last three weeks. And then, so the ratio of twenty police officers to ten firefighters. That's the ratio we do. So because that's what you need, two cops that's scoring groups of five, that's why they do it. So.
Thank you for doing that for Okam.
No, it's a good, I said, I want to get the get us on, up to speed with that.
For the next meeting, you'll have a I could have a sample policy for the health insurance. I think that's all I have.
That was just.
You guys have anything else?
I do not.
I do not.
Motion adjourned?
I move we adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seven eighteen.